I would like to welcome everyone to your daily order meeting of the year twelve. Will everyone please rise to pledge allegiance and honor the citizens of the state of Springfield, a winner of the original in this community that vouched for us. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, a true republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Let me begin by introducing the speaker forward. At my far left is trustee Dratiano. Next to him is trustee Corelli. Next to him is trustee Tabori. Next to her is my deputy mayor, is Luis Gomez. And to my right is the under the weather Desiree Hoppick. So we're going to jump right into this, our first public hearing, which is a moratorium weight petition for Halloween Cross. We know what's up, notice. Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments to consider a request for relief in Local 1921. For property located by Halloween Cross. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the application whereby the property owner is alleging that it suffers unnecessary or extraordinary hardship from the continued moratorium. The public notice is printed in the time travel record on May 5, 2022. Is the angry leader present? Would you? Step to the podium.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving the opportunity. I'm going to start the speech again from the record. My name is Joel Jacob. The property is of my wife's patient, their age. Okay, go ahead. We bought this property, which was approved to move the house. More than a year ago, we already wanted to meet in the board meeting to submit the application because we want to make a little bit different design to the house. I have a father who's very ill. He's had lung cancer, twice, he can't walk any steps. He lives in the building. He's on the third floor, he lives on the third floor. It's not possible to walk out, so I tried to make it look a bum level. And we were before, more than a year, before the board, activated a long time to get a meeting. And we're supposed to get the approval, then they pushed it off. A few meetings in between, I had to take it as necessary. And my understanding is that everything I did, what the board was asking, and just this when the board came in, which this property is already approved for order of the sewer brand, pay taxes movement, six years for this property.
Anything else? Anything? Just want to make sure you finish something. We received communication from Natalie Larr from each of them. So we received, so Kelly, what did you roll for what we received from our? As pertains to this application?
Yes, so the H2M Natalie Larr, the village engineer, provides us with a report dated March 22nd. And what she said that, she said that the applicant's correspondence does not appear to appeal to the hardship waiver criteria. That the application is for an ARV approval to be shown a new single family four bedroom home, previously could yet undeveloped, lacking the WP3 subdivision. So there are other criteria, as you know, that are set forth in the resolution that you adopted at the end of December 2021, that the applicant should have provided information to this board to check off those elements that were supporting a hardship and what that was for instance, the death.
So is it just a case of missing information, or is it?
Well, if the applicant has additional information that they want to submit, or if they'd like to make some mental submission to try and appeal to those factors, the board could certainly allow that. I don't know if they would have any information that would satisfy the criteria.
Would that be, can you warm up any questions for the applicant?
Your original plan was changed?
Yeah.
What size, from what side did you go to?
I don't think so. They had.
Can I, I mean.
And introduce yourself.
Yeah.
Yes. Hi, my name is Larry Robert from the side.
I'm sorry.
Larry Robert.
Perfect, thank you. I'll stick to my personal.
So basically, I work for Joel designing the house, you know, architecture services. So let me give you a little delay to this place property. This property is located previously with a site plan, which means he could technically, he's not part of the moratorium, he can technically build some location with the house, he will get approved all of the lots, it's 450 lots on commission. And anybody on that specific subdivision could just give him a permit and get a, just give him a plan and get a permit, because that subdivision is exempt from the moratorium. Where the problem with this lot appears is basically, if you do anything different, which means change either window of one of the proof models, this layout, on this development, you technically have to go to the ARP to get it approved. So what happened is Joel, at five, they came to me, we did some changes, and that's when he said, he did changes, he wanted a one story home instead of a two story. Therefore, we went to the ARP. But we were at the ARP. This moratorium came in, in fact. Okay, now, the, if you, you kind of went back forward to the ARP, we kind of changed it according to this, we had, now that it came to a vote, they said technically, your exemption from the building department, somehow ARP, that's the way attorney, the religious attorney called the form of the toriel, that the ARP does not have an exemption to the proof side. So now we follow into the halls, which is technically, he scraps his plan, takes an existing model, same size home center, it gets approved. He doesn't use, use exemption from the moratorium. And because he has had the ARP, if the ARP can't vote for it, honestly, he gets an exemption. The ARP does not have this exemption, according to the lawyer, the ARP does not have the exemption of previous proof side. So, felt compressed, that's how we felt, because if it's a water issue, you can just change his design. He goes to the building department, he gets a permit, correct? So the only, the only, so he's suffering an unnecessary hardship because his design, not because of the model, water, not because of it. So therefore, we find it, because it's unnecessary hardship. It's not a water issue, he's already, he thought it's going to be over. We waited, got a standard to figure, we asked the file for this unnecessary hardship. Either, I'm not sure, either, and the way I read it is that the ARP is also exempt from his proof side plan, either get it, ARP, exemption, so you can vote on this, just vote on that, and or, you know, give a vote on exceptions. Just doesn't make sense, it's just a design issue, just because it does, he's already from like, take an existing model, file for it. It always waited for so long to it, but figure that's why I give the board, and hope the board can understand that this is just a matter of design. He's technically exempt, because he had to vote the ARP.
What's the difference in size of the approved house versus the one that had to go through the ARP, the changes, or the, you know, that, right?
Right.
The property is the same, that's,
Same size, same bed, same bathroom.
That's something that ARP could set.
Yeah.
Um, once more, they approve it.
The size of the property is the same?
Yeah.
No, but it's also bathrooms and the bathroom.
Right, well, the bathrooms and the bed ratio is, like I said.
So just choose multiple stories, two blocks, three.
And just for, for me, if he does the same design, it doesn't matter how many bedrooms he does. If it's the whole design, you get to prove, there's no limit. To be reached the proof side, it does not limit to the bedrooms. The bedroom, that's besides the story, but it does not have your house, and that was, that was short by the ARP, they don't approve your house.
So you're not getting approved by the ARP?
You can't, they can't, because they're sort of moratorium, because there's no exemption in the ARP to move forward.
The way the moratorium exempts for the building department, but it doesn't exempt for the ARP.
So then just to confirm, the changes from the two story house to a one story house, where it's clear to say the bedrooms are bedrooms, just you want one level.
It's a difference, layout is different, so it won't affect it, if it got changed, that's why we are the ARP.
Yeah. Speaking of that, I have two questions. One, they're both for now, so you asked my question. Is it true that the area where they're building this was previously exempt?
No, I think what you're trying to say is that if they built a model that's previously approved by the ARV, then they can go forward, building permit. But what the exemptions in your moratorium say on application for ARV approval for previously approved structures, including residential ones. So if they use a previously approved model, they'd be able to go forward. They're not doing that, they're changing the model, and that's why they have to go forward. For the ARP, ARP is unable to recommend.
Okay, so that's, thanks for the first question, so they were really two story, they were.
If that was one of the models, I was trying to look at that in my files, and I could find this model.
All right, second question is, even if we wanted to give it a margin of favor, is there anything we can do within the process?
If they satisfy the standards that were reported in the resolution from December, then you'd be able to do that. But one of the things in there says that the extraordinary hardship is not the result of, that's all I have. From a venue like the, that the failure to grant that will cause this extraordinary hardship substantially need to its proper circumstances. And such hardship is substantially greater than hardship, including for not limited to financial hardship necessarily experienced by other applicants having their work, they cannot reach a decision to waive. So part of the argument, they're paying more taxes, but that's just the financial hardship. So you have to really consider the other elements, and the other standards that are in your resolution, section D.
I mean, the money is just that. Because their cost, that's half, but the real issue is that in a way, he gets punished. And I know the way the moratorium is written, that he can't satisfy everything, but technically, it doesn't help the public if he goes with the old model, or with the newer model, or with his own design model, actually.
And I disagree with the actual gas, or what type of graphics do we even have because the, or the hardship is held, which they're good for what the hardships are, changing the model, we wouldn't have the legal in the current legal process to even defend that legally. That's what I'm really trying to figure out.
You would, you have the ability to entertain the petition for hardship waiver, or you wouldn't have allowed it on page any time. But it's whether or not they satisfy the standards, since that was there into your satisfaction.
Right, I guess it's still, they've been on my question. Is changing the model, doesn't, is there anything in our legal process that counts for that?
Just, just changing the model?
Yes.
No.
All right, so theoretically, they don't, that's what I'm trying to say, we can entertain that. They don't need one of those criteria. And we need that.
You have, maybe I'm not clear, you have the ability to act on it, as long as you find that this is sufficiently unique, and that there is extraordinary hardship. So simply because they want to build a different model, then what is approved? Would you consider that an extraordinary hardship? That's the question. And it may be that you want to take a look at whatever they had submitted, or should you have tried to report, could find previously for the house that they could be approved for, as opposed to the house that they're proposing, to make sure, take a look at what was proposed versus what is proposed, that may help you. I would suggest that they take a look at that subsection D of the resolution that you adopted, and maybe get the policy.
Because when you're looking at water balance, if you, if we're trying to get to make sure that we're doing this, you know, really hundred percent correct and same old residences. If you look at water balance, if you're going to use four bed, or four bed, or two story house, and you're going to use four bed, or four bed, or multiple beds, it should matter. That's where I'm going with it, is I'm not sure we're able to do that. It may not be an extraordinary hardship, it may be an unintended.
An unintended factor.
Similar to the fire.
Right, that wasn't happening.
And that was thinking, that was.
That's what I'm saying.
It started the process.
Because, you know, I would assume this form, Jen's had to go to track, this one's already been tracked. Then we get in the morning, and we had that in water balance application, we were ready. So that's why I'm trying to protect it. But we have the ability to do the subsequent statements, and we should have, we have the legal experience. And therefore, all of this.
Just for that basis, I don't think that it inherently would count for an unintended consequence, which is how, actually, when you go down with the first resolution for hardship process, you didn't account for other unintended consequences to somebody that got a water that was not using additional municipal water, and you modified your resolutions to cap that, and relax the background. This could be something that the board considers as another unintended consequence, but unless they meet the standards herein, like Joe's saying, that this permits just the substitution of one model or another model. If the second model wasn't approved, we, it doesn't carry out. Doesn't, it would be considered like extraordinary hardship.
That's where I'm going with it.
That, that, well, my response to get to what I gave you.
Yes, and then you have to argue that. Like, see, this is not intended for, but I know.
The intended more.
Yeah, it's not the intended more, and, but I don't know if we need ourselves to be out unless we change the, the process again to consider this, because that's where I'm going with it.
Yeah, it's simply just being the decision of the board right now to allow this, allow this way to request to move forward.
That's what I did.
It's not empty.
The place is important anyway. Because he did state, Mr. Johnson stated that this was moved from a buyer to a ranch buyer of the basement, because the father is, that would cancel for us. About that cancer, so you're trying to keep it so we can not walk it upstairs. So that's the reason why the house was changed, it turns the side.
With the change now, you said that if you want with that change, you will be approved by the ARP, you think you will?
Yes, basically.
Yes, and they are not through it.
Yeah, that's why we accommodate all the needs, they were like, happy. But that was about, that was right before the first, including it was about the supplier. Then they figured it's going to expire, but then you have to do it. So I'm waiting to get this board, then it was on the pass of the holiday, go, then.
Waiting to just explain it, I would be more comfortable instead of going after changing, changing, title of house. Change someone's health, the worst could be extraordinary hardship. So I would be more comfortable going that direction, just changing the model.
Now, the bathrooms and everything else is going to be the same, and the output of water and all that.
Yes, there are plenty of proof models that have more bedrooms, and more homes, and more bathrooms than the current office. So you can technically only use the sixteen or eighteen approved models, or I think it's close to twenty approved models. There are models with less bedrooms, or more with bigger bedrooms, right? There are models, approved models, that actually put on more bedrooms and more bathrooms, I'm not, yes.
Kelly, just one.
Was it the trees and the bathrooms?
No. Kelly, just one from the front, so you've been through the ARP process, and then the moratorium just stopped there again?
So the last time, this is before the planning board, they hold a public hearing on October 20th. They closed the public hearing, and the notes from our office for that meeting say that the planning board is happy with the application, and would have approved it, what, with the moratorium. But if we're talking about the way that, I guess I just need to the direction as to where trustee Dratiano was going at this board, would like a additional subsection prepared for this sort of unintended consequence, where it's really just the layout and everything else is the same. We could certainly put one together, rear consideration for your next meeting. In that instance, I would, well, for any of these applications that you're here tonight, you wouldn't be taking any action to that whole resolution for you. So it depends on how you want to handle this one. If you are persuaded that the health of this gentleman's father is the extraordinary circumstance, or if you would like to catch others that may be in this similar circumstance as well, we could put that together either way, depending on what the board wants. If they do not slow down this application, or something.
So first, let me just stop with, any other questions?
Yes. If we have this on our next agenda, is there another window that wait for it to be approved? Public hearings and all that, so that's your standard change, in and of, for the, no, it's the resolution. Okay, no, I'm just, forget it. But we can approve it the 31st, and.
If that, if that's how the board goes.
If we get some, for someone.
Anyone answer the board, any questions? So at this point, I will, we're done, you guys can have a seat.
Two minutes of public hearing.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll ask anyone in the public, which speak on this application. Anyone here, anyone?
I don't know.
I know, Zoom or otherwise.
Here.
You guys hear a job, do? Sandy, raise your hand. Mister, can you give us a thumbs up if you can hear us? I've heard Jesus put his hand up.
No, that was a mask.
Oh, yeah.
The hands are for yellow.
Okay. And no one from the public wishes to, so hand a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
Well, it's up to this board. If you want additional information showing a model that they could build as compared to the model that they're proposing, and that you could confirm that it falls within a potentially new exemption from the moratorium, or if you determine that the, again, the illness of the gentleman's father is not a direction. But it, it just the direction as to where you want to go, if you want to.
Well, that's why I suppose the public hearing, because I figured, oh, why can't we close the public hearing regardless? So we can move that out of there. And then we can, I can go to the board and for a discussion, and ask them how they want to proceed. Because I, anyway, so can I get a motion in a second, in a second to close the public? Okay, motion.
I'll second.
All right, trustee Dratiano, trustee Corelli, second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the special items. So how do we wish to proceed? Either granting the hardship, or coming back with a resolution, and then or adapting, or change to the original law, and then adopting this or approving this on the 31st. So how does the board wish to proceed with this? No, also anyone wants?
Do we have a ready to propose? You?
We.
Don't, did you?
Yes, this is through.
It's not more than you.
Yeah, we went through the materials, that, he was there about six months. And that's.
Someone approving, you're not going to change that to a.
No, that we can't, the building department never.
They started before the planning board, in May, actually, May 19th of last year, when they actually appeared, so they were submitted at least about a month before then.
Is there, and how would you both consider a sick father being extreme circumstance, and also going through with the addition to the resolution to?
Yeah, you can, yeah, actually, you know which way you'd like the resolution to track to the curtains.
Okay. I'm, I feel horrible. The intent of the more, if you're telling us that could be a circumstance, the intent of the moratorium is to respond to order, and they're not, this is, in my opinion, a technicality, unless somebody says wash. And I would really not want them to hear, because people are not able to do something, so I'm flattered. Defining the sick father as the extraordinary hardship.
CJ.
I agree, if we should also, the moratorium is, we have to go off and say to them, we're on any possible, so this is all of them, so.
And then prove it at the meeting on 31st, or. Okay, there.
I also agree. Do the sick father hardship. I also am in favor of a resolution for, on, on something that's going forward, that we also want to force. Is this?
This is the reason we've had this whole case by case, and just of this property, this is definitely a hardship that I can see. I would see why I'd check it out.
I love that, same opinion as well. I see what I can just impose on Anthony hardship, and then deal with this acting in terms of changing the law forward in this substantial height. But here in the board, it sounds like, so Kelly, the next move refers to adjournance to the next meeting? Continuum to the next meeting?
No, so you closed the public hearing, so what you would do would be to authorize a resolution consistent with your exceptions to see. They all, I'm sorry.
Some, yeah. You had said, and again, a little bit, you had said that they would have to authorize you to amend the hardship resolution as well, to include a medical condition, one of the reasons, or?
No, that, no. Just being amended, and to figure out how to word it yet, but for the unintended consequences, that.
Okay, so there's no amendment needed for the actual hardship resolution criteria that we had outlined previously. You want me to word emotion?
No, I just want to, I want to get said during the discussion, during the public hearing, that this was all reasons, instead of being one of the criteria, I'm going to have to amend the resolution, say that.
No, they, you're considering.
They were considering that, and I just want to be sure. So I'm just sitting here to be given the passage, just a motion to decide to direct to the United States Attorney Department, a favorable resolution, getting with evidence from the board, how does it seem? At that.
There you go, I made that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ooh. So be it.
That's it.
Thank you so much.
Happy building.
Love it. We have to go back to the ARP.
It can be.
Yes. Back in the next meeting, we're on a bit, and I was about to show you about the planning board, and your view of all of them. I'm sorry, this is so long, thank you, patients, as trustee is part of. Yes. Okay. Next public hearing, a moratorium weight petition, 19th September. Public hearing is being, is being held to entertain public comments to consider a request for relief in Local 1921. We're directly located with 19th September. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the application whereby the property owner is alleging that it suffers unnecessary or extraordinary hardship from the continued moratorium. The public, the public notice was printed in the time travel record on May, May 5, 2022. While the outcome is not here, they ask for continuation to our continuance on May 31st. At this time, I will ask if there's anyone in the public who wishes to see this. If not, I'll put the bottom of my notes, I'll go to the bottom. Thank you.
Larry Robert, from the side. This obligation is a similar but different situation. Flying over the property, before moratorium, or the new rich reservation law come in effect. I started with a idea, a house. Uh, I started designing, I, uh, household client. Um, middle designing, um, new rich reservation law and effect, which means that we have to go to the A R P anything that's above, we should have an obligation. So we went for the A R P, same thing, uh, it's, it's a long process to get the final application, we only get it two months, uh, two months into the A R P, this motor, we got it to, uh, that effect. Um, same thing, we kind of changed the plans to accommodate all the A R P needs. Uh, but now there's a moratorium for specific one. Now, what is different to this specific one than any other single family is um, having doesn't fall into the previously approved site, even though it has an existing house on it. Um, but what is different is it does not have any municipal water or sewer. Which means it hasn't existed well and it's going to have, no houses can have a well, it's not have access to any water or sewer. Uh, so we're filing for unexpected hardship, uh, but this one, we're not going to take an additional order from the town, from the town village, um, and therefore a ton of that hasn't existed, although that matters, but the main thing is that, um, we're not standing to take any order from the board on some lives that.
Where is the water going to come from? For what?
It just doesn't have, I mean, he wouldn't wait, if he can get municipal water, he'll wait, but the thing about it just, that area does not have, simply does not, the water does not supply any missile to that whole area.
All right, anyone in the board have no questions? Anyone from the public with any questions? Can I get a motion in a second to continue this to on May thirty first? Okay, motion by trustee Gomez, second by trustee Eury. Any discussion?
Trustee for our main motion.
Uh, I heard you over there. And trustee Barrell, and then trustee Gomez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So leave, so Eric, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. More speed on Popeyes.
Okay.
Okay, good night. All right, moving right along to the third and final, uh, moratorium labor petition for Popeyes on second drive. Public hearing was held, or public hearing is being held, to entertain public comments to consider a request for relief from local one nine twenty twenty one for properly located twenty second drive. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the application whereby the property owner is alleged and suffers unnecessary or extraordinary hardship when they continue moratorium. The public notice was printed in the time circle record on May the eleventh. Is anyone here, who are you?
Nicholas Ward Willis.
Good evening, mayor, members of the board, Nicholas Ward Willis with Keenan Bean on behalf of the applicant Woodbury Chicken. We represent, uh, Popeyes, which is proposing Woodbury Chickens to replace the existing pizzeria Uno building. We have appeared before the planning board in Z B A and received variances from the zoning board of appeals. The planning board is reviewing the site plan for the proposed Popeyes that would, uh, propose a two thousand four hundred square foot Popeyes Chicken with forty eight seats, they've closed the public hearing on the site plan and we anticipate receiving a favorable consideration at their next meeting. The Popeyes is replacing the existing pizzeria Unos, which will be demolished. Uh, we have forty eight seats, uh, the pizzeria Uno has a hundred and eighty four seats. Pizzeria Uno is five thousand six hundred square feet, we're about twenty four hundred square feet. And as you will note from the engineer's memo submitted to the board, we have established that we are already an existing customer of the Village of Harriman uh, water supply system, and they provided a will serve letter, which is included in your material submitted in support of the application. Additionally, our engineer submitted a report that established there will be a reduction of water usage of approximately four thousand seven hundred and ninety gallons per day. So we respectfully submit that we've satisfied the hardship criteria that is being set forth in your law to warrant the granting of the exemption from the moratorium. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have, and thank you for your consideration.
And thank you Nicholas for keeping, giving us the average version.
Yes.
Okay, anyone from the board have any questions for this? Anyone from the public have any questions, we'll stop with the virtual. Okay, here and now, Rachel, you have any questions? Can I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing? No?
Um, I apologize, uh, due to an error in publication, this public hearing does need to be continued until your, May thirty first, May thirty first, thank you meeting, uh, but we can obviously consider a resolution at that meeting for this application, I just need to know which direction of where it's leaning, but you'll have to take into account any public comments obviously that you received at that meeting.
Yeah, I don't want to assume anything, but it sounds like we have favorable, um, we can.
With meetings.
Yes.
I think there were public comments.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
So can I please have a motion in a second, so I can ask for motion in a second to pre draft a favorable resolution? I have to keep the public hearing open until the next meeting when you will read off the resolution that approved it, what?
After the public comment, yes.
Okay. All right, can I please have a motion in a second to direct attorney Kelly Norton to draft a favorable resolution based on all that was presented?
Not sure.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sylvia.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
You too.
All right, motion and second to continue the public hearing till on May thirty first.
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sylvia, all right. There we go. Yep. All right, as, as this pop man gets some words, I'm going to tell you about my child here. Moving my board, because we can move, we can move this, so at, at this time, do I have anyone in the public wishing to comment on agenda I versus O? No, okay, moving right along, and I'll say these next thoughts are restored. Somebody walking across, you know, just tripping the ball. I'm looking for a motion in a second to accept received in minutes, and the meeting is held on April nineteenth, twenty twenty two.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Eury. Trustee Graziano. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, proof of an act check, I need a motion in second to approve act check twenty one, including the act of two one two oh six five. And two one two one nine five totaling two hundred thirty thousand nine hundred and twenty six dollars in N D expense. Trustee Gomez with a motion, can I have a second? I'll make a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Change of employment status for Jennifer Park, I need a motion in second to change the employment status of Jennifer Park at full time in Orange County Department of Human Resources, uh, Secretary to Planning and Zoning Board Appeals effective June one, twenty twenty two, totaling twenty four dollars and ninety two cents.
I'll make.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Department equipment requests, and I need as, can I please have a motion in second to approve bombing fire on the quick, quick movement. Twenty twenty two dash fifteen totaling approximately two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for the purchase of fire was in various circumstances. And twenty twenty two dash sixteen totaling approximately four hundred fifty dollars, which paid ten members for C P R and A E U.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Scheduling use of planning and zoning board, so it's that time of year again where the, um, we have, may have some changes to the vote boards, let's begin with a discussion, I need a eight and then I need a time, and whether we conduct these interviews virtually or in person. So initially, I was thinking that we could do this prior to our next meeting.
Yeah.
Three, so we have three application, two of them are returning members, and one is somebody we previously interviewed for an open spot, so I am potentially looking to do this on May thirty first, we'll be starting at six forty five. May thirty first, six forty five, and we do it at seven o'clock, Friday at the major, and we do it virtually. Or it's interesting, I know CJ, you have.
Tuesdays are tough.
I know, I know. On May thirty first, yeah, we, we reschedule the May thirty first meetings, figuring it would be the end of the fiscal year. And all the department heads are not tuning out every call. So, and as much as, Tuesday. Yeah, so anyway, anyone? Any ideas, any other ideas, or we just go with the overall time limit?
May thirty first question.
Okay, six forty five, second.
Six forty.
Six forty five, all right, can I please have a motion in second to schedule virtual or in person? Virtual?
Does it matter what the meeting?
Yeah, we have.
Oh, for them?
Yes, we can, virtual, okay. Virtual, uh, scheduled virtual meetings to be held on, uh, May thirty first to conduct interviews for individuals that submitted letters of interest to serve the planning board or zoning board. So can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Uh, do I have a second, please, Gomez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Accept slave officers, fire chiefs, can I please have a motion in a second to accept the slave fire chief officers to twenty twenty two, Christopher Berg as fire chief, bar one, studying planning junior versus assistant fire chief, bar two, Brian Wallace, second assistant fire chief, bar three.
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Okay, close return of S R, uh, over Paper Road redesign. This application has been withdrawn and confirmed by attorney Kelly Norton, therefore, an emotion is second to return the S R posted with interest earned in returns of the applicant for closure of the S R.
Make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, block party request, Rockland Avenue, can I please have a motion in second to approve the temporary closures of Rockland Avenue on August sixth, twenty twenty two, for the residents of that area to conduct the block party.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three holiday schedule for Village offices. We, we give you guys things a lot, holidays? What is this coming to? All right, anyway, can I please have a motion in second to remove the holiday schedule for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three fiscal year? June twentieth is Juneteenth observance, July fourth is Independence Day, September fifth, there. October tenth is Columbus Day, November eleventh, Veterans Day. November twenty fourth and twenty fifth, Thanksgiving, December twenty sixth is Christmas Day observance. January second is Junior's Day observance. January sixteenth is N L A Junior Day. February tenth, twentieth is President's Day, April tenth is the Golden Holiday, and May twenty ninth is Memorial. Oh, I didn't put Rob's birthday down, so. Do I have a motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public assembly permit waiver fee request memorial day parade, can I please have a motion in second to approve the waiver for all permit fees in relation to the animal who would earn the one day parade, public assembly permit.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Security system service agreement, so we have a whole, a lot in the new campus here, the building and elsewhere. So can I please have a motion in second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the service agreement? Sign the service agreement with standard security and maintenance of our security system and it costs seven thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and thirty cents to the year. All right, do I have a second? Second. Trustee Eury, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving right along. Introductory local law three, twenty twenty two, fire prevention. Kelly, you must stay up late at night just coming up with the names, please stop the loss.
It's tough.
Can I say? All right, can I please have a motion in second to introduce introductory local law three, twenty twenty, twenty twenty two, which would amend chapter one fifty four of the Village Hall, entitled Fire Prevention to provide for the requirement of installation of max boxes.
I'll make a motion.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Who was the second, Barrell? And the first was trustee. All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I now, all right, please, I'll get to that, all right, can I please have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held at seven thirty A M on May thirty first to entertain public comments on introductory local law three, twenty twenty entitled Fire Prevention.
Make a motion.
Do I have a second? Second by trustee Gomez, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, a motion in a second to refer local law three of twenty twenty two entitled Fire Prevention to planning board to the building that warrants, uh, heading, head, building is back there, half an hour, and fire chief, Christopher Berg.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving right along. Can I please have a look at, so we can introduce local law four for the twenty two, that Kelly's entitled Video Conference.
Again, another great plan.
I know.
So free.
I can't tell you. Can't imagine if people had bands and had the main cowards, everyone just did. Then please have a motion in a second to introduce introductory local law four, twenty twenty two, which would authorize the Village of Woodbury Public Fox to use video conferencing technology to participate in public meetings. Second? Trustee Gomez, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That was set order.
Oh.
Do you say? All right. The woman said all. You're really just not. No, all right, can, can I now have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held on May thirty first, twenty twenty to entertain public comments on introductory local law four of twenty twenty two entitled Video Conference.
I'll make a good move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, can I please have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor? It doesn't, it just meant it's all. To sign the work compensation policy renewal with term for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, it costs a hundred and forty one thousand nine hundred and thirty four hours. I'll second, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, okay, fine, all right. Schedule a public hearing, moratorium labor request, yeah, no, else. Can I please have a motion in second to schedule a public hearing to be held on May thirty first, twenty twenty two at seven thirty A M Village Hall to consider request for relief from local one nine or twenty twenty one for privately located ninety five Maryland. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, in additional item, can I please have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign? to sign? To sign the general municipal insurance renewal policy, Marshall and Sterling Insurance.
Make the motion.
All right, I have a second. Mr. Gomez, a second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So that concludes our regular business for the season. I don't think I've ever said that in all these meetings, has it? So at this time, I'll ask the public if they have anything they wish to speak on. Anyone, we'll start with Rachel Ethan?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay, very good. Uh, anyone out there that's here with us still virtually? Wish to speak on anything? Anyone? Okay. I guess I'm not getting anything from the public, so I'll move on to the public comments. So Jason, bring it all, you're here for the Order Service Committee. I'll start with you.
Um, no, I have no comments, other than, uh, we have well eight back in service, and, uh, it's back in the system. And we're gonna continue to monitor it.
Thank you, sir. Awesome. Very good. Uh, Mike Manella? Hey, building inspector, anything?
Uh, good evening, uh, nothing at this time. Thank you very much.
And I would be remiss if I don't mention the greatest topic on it in the entire world. Robert Wong, do you have any comments?
I don't have that.
You have the, you have the event, you start the event Saturday, the, um.
We do.
Okay. The electronic product and strategy. Okay, Chris Burke is on, Chief Burke is on. Okay. Moving on to more comments, starting with, uh, trustee Graziano. All right. Any other comments, anything?
Uh, you know, kind of, kind of thinking about where I was gonna go before talking, right? I had it around several different directions, and, you know, kind of settle up. This being mental health awareness, I wanted to kind of take a step back and look at how we're treating each other, you know, from a national or, or doesn't matter. This country becoming so diametrically poor, opposite of each other, and we're treated into individual corners that is getting very scared. And it's not good for the benefit of the public, anyone, to be so angry about so many different things. You know, we're all people, and growing in differences, growing in differences of opinion. We need to start respecting that opinion. It doesn't matter what letter of fact or your name, or what letter you go for, maybe. You need a letter to run rules of, you know, do with this country. But the, the letter doesn't define you, who you are, and what you feel, and how you tackle issues. I think we all kind of need to calm down and stop the anger, because, you know, I get it, we had a pandemic, that nerve got on edge. We had a lot of inflation, and costs were rising, that goes everywhere, that's putting everyone on edge. Gasoline is five dollars again, those people alive. The young screaming at each other, or, or threatening harm to each other, as I've seen on some instances, is not really excellent, what we're trying to do, is creating. So I think we need to kind of stop trying to be correct. Stop trying to eliminate the enemy at all costs, because what's going on is the letters are trying to be so right, and trying to prove that you have a side so wrong. Everybody in the middle is losing, and everybody in the middle is probably six or ten, it's ninety or so in this country. And, you know, kind of goes that way locally, as well as nationally. You know, I, we've seen it, and it's just something that for everybody as a global being, take a breath, you know, enjoy what you have, take a look at your family, are they home? Go outside. Take, take a stroll, something, but let go of the anger, and start treating each other like a better human beings. And I think that'll be so much better, mental health, everyone in this country, so thank you, and stay happy.
Thank you, trustee Graziano. Trustee Thorely.
Anything there? Just wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I don't have much, but it's wonderful, sure, I'd like to have you. I'll be seeing you more today.
And we'll say it once again, I'll say it here, it can be, get Victorelli on the phone, he wants to talk to you, we're all friends. That is true. It can be about breakfast cereal, it can just keep going on. Trustee here.
Sorry. Uh, thank you, everyone, for attending. One of the biggest challenges we face as a smaller community is voter apathy. I think we are our own worst enemies when it, when we choose not to educate ourselves, when, uh, but more importantly, uh, we choose not to vote. We choose not to vote for a variety of reasons. Um, we think that our vote won't matter. We don't like the candidates who are running, um, we might not agree with them. Or we choose not to vote because we are too busy to care and believe that it will be someone else's problem. Um, if you're not happy with the status quo, you should vote. If you are happy with the status quo, you should vote. Um, if you're indifferent to how much you pay in taxes, and who represents you on any one of the boards, whether it's municipal board or school board, you should vote. Uh, because chances are, there is someone in your life who the vote will matter to. And whether it's your neighbor or a family member, vote for their sake, not for yours. Now, I realize that it's only May, and it's a little early for these types of, of commentary for many, many board members. Um, but, uh, however, a lot of people, I think they are aware, or maybe not, um, Tuesday is the, uh, Monroe Woodbury Board of Education Elections and Budget Vote. Um, that's May seventeenth, and it will take place at, um, Central Valley Elementary School. And last night was the Board of Education Candidate Meet and Breed, where, um, the P T A Council from, uh, Woodbury organized a Q and A. Uh, members from the public could submit questions beforehand and go to the high school and actually meet the candidates. Um, there are three seats open, and four candidates running, and three incumbents. Um, I, I don't know about you, but I see a lot of stuff on social media where people complaining mainly about their school taxes, because they're so high, you know, the highest chunk of taxes that we pay as homeowners. Um, and it was very disturbing to me to see only five people in attendance in person. Um, there was a virtual option, I just hope that there were fifteen thousand people online, because it's a lot of, you know, um, keyboard warriors out there. And I, I think it's, we owe it to ourselves, we owe it to our children, to know who's representing us, to put the right people on those boards, um, to educate us all on what's in the budget. Um, there are people complaining that their taxes are going up again, and, and they don't even know what, what's in there, what they're, what they're proposing to be here. Um, and I understand we are all really busy, we all have lives, we all have hobbies, we all have children, we all have people that we take care of. Um, that's fine, but then, if you're not going to put yourself out there to get the information, and anything to make a informed decision, I just ask that you, you don't really complain about it, because you're part of the problem with what's happening in, in, just not Woodbury, and CJ mentioned the world. Um, I, I feel that voter apathy and disengagement is, is very real, and it's affecting, in, from the school perspective, our children's academic lives, um, not just our pockets and taxes that we pay. So please, for anyone who is watching, I encourage you all to show up to vote on Tuesday, May seventeenth, again, at Central Valley Elementary School. Um, polls will be open from six A M to nine P M. Um, and it doesn't matter if you vote yes or no for the budget, for which candidate you vote for, it, it doesn't matter, just vote um, for our kids' sakes and for the vision that you want our schools to embrace. Um, so that's, that's part of it. Um, I just want to mention something, despite I don't think Lily's watching. Um, she made me promise I would mention her. Uh, upcoming week on May eighteenth is her sixth birthday. And I want to wish her a happy birthday, um, and she wants her Uncle Andrew, and, you know, everybody up here who she sees and loves, um, to, to acknowledge that it's her birthday, to make sure that I ask. Um, I just, I wanted to know, and I'm very proud of her, um, that every odds, and, and she's been fighting the odds since birth, um, two percent chance of survival, and she's here today. Um, for anyone who's watched her grow, and has seen her struggle, and how resilient and tenacious she is, um, really is unmatched with any, not just because she's my child, but it's, it's remarkable. Um, and I said this once before, and I'll say it again, I really do pity the person in this world that tells me she can't do something. Uh, because she'll say, "Hold my beer, hold my bottle, hold my water," but she's gonna do it. Um, so, uh, Lily has been our family's greatest teacher um, about overcoming obstacles, never giving up, and about learning to focus on what is important in the moment. Um, so Lily, who I think is still awake, even though it's a minute after bedtime, um, happy birthday, and we love you very much, and thank you, everyone, for entertaining me and listening and to attending. Have a great night, and be safe.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Lily.
She's not a princess, she's a queen of the house, let's be clear. Thank you.
Queen Lily the first.
Thank you.
We're recording. Thank you, trustee here, trustee Gomez.
Happy birthday, Lily.
You're already my favorite, so buddy, you don't have to support. She doesn't have, she doesn't have to.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Uh, thank you all for coming out, and, uh, here, here, and, uh, virtual, uh, very much, and to all, uh, some homeowners, and all the employees. On, uh, the, the fourteenth, besides the electronic drop-off and shredding, that's what I have, we also have blood drive. It's our third annual blood drive, another memory of Matt Enson, who's a good friend, good person. And this year, we're honoring, letting it go long. So please, as you're going, drop off all the stuff, sign up, and then head over right, almost next door. Come get that big gift of life. A lot of people need the blood, um, especially babies, and I happen to be one of the few that have those that are C A V negative. Babies have special, you know, sandwich, only certain adults carry it to, uh, so if you have that, please tomorrow. Like, uh, Tyra said, it's a lot of kids that need that, especially blood. And, uh, it's a great gift that you can give without having to sacrifice much. And we give you juice and cookies. So, um, and that's it, uh, have a great night, stay home safe, boys, everyone, and God bless.
All right. Trustee, thank you, trustee Gomez, deputy mayor.
Yes, I do a couple of nights. As a reminder, since we're talking about elections, primary days scheduled for June twenty eighth. Uh, there, as far as I'm aware, there will be a primary for Governor and Archimony Sharp scheduled for that day. I guess, yet to be told where you are going, to go to St. Patrick's Jim, will not be going here, just for that election, but it's the key final for me. So this calendar, you know, I will let you know. And they also just informed me earlier this week that there will be another primary on August twenty-third uh, for any type of setting or assembly districts that may have primaries to these district events that they have in five months, yeah. Um, you know, somebody, Douglas, his former mayor, he's family of the laws, they had experience last week. And last week was also professional municipal clerk's week, and we asked one of the administrators to stay. So I just want to recognize the village's municipal clerks, the dedication they have for our community, Jill Wido, the recovery department, Ingrid Tsouas, the water steward department, Rory Rubio, Mary's Aldo, and Jennifer Potter, the building department, of course, just one, and Colleen, who I said in my office. I just found out, I have the mistakes made that the NFL schedule is out. And the Packers will be playing Eagles in Philadelphia on, I'm assuming, weekend, so, uh, we need to contact somebody that can be fixed for that, right? Oh, so, yeah.
Thank you for finding, all right, just piggybacking on what deputy mayor Gomez said. So listen, I get it, the weather's gotten good, you've been trapped in your house for two years because of this pandemic. I'm not getting a lot of science, but I gotta be honest, but that's not a Woodbury exclusive problem. That happens to be a problem all of Hudson Valley right now. On Monday, the New York Blood Center issued a emergency blood shortage, because every one of the blood drives they've posted a whole day has come up very short. So, and, and like I said, once again, I get, you're, you're having the opportunity to finally get out of the house. Who wants to be, you know, held down by giving blood? This is not something we can pass on to the next person, well, he'll donate, or she'll donate. The, the blood is always given. Every pint saves basically, potentially saves five lives. So we've got plenty of open spots in the African year. We've done this three years, and Woodbury has always hit, hit out of the car. I think our first year was about eighty, last year we were at ninety-eight. So this year, I've only got about thirty-five people signed up for this that's being held on Saturday. So I prayed for rain. We're getting rain on Saturday, so any plans to go to the beach, pool, whatnot? You're out of luck. So I'm inviting you to come to Village Hall, be properly entertained by me. Of course, like, like trustee Gomez said, you'll get milking cookies and juices, and and call people here, come eat with the best friends, so, uh, please, come and donate to give the blood. With that being said, I will accept the motion and second to adjourn this meeting.
Would you just back tell it?
Well, I can.
Okay. With no further business to stop, I will accept a motion in second to adjourn me.
Motion.
Second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, our next meeting is scheduled for May thirty-first, it'll be probably, about a dozen times here tonight. Thank you, everyone, for joining us, and have a good evening.
Good luck.